This Amador County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February 6, 2024. Would you please join us to pledge allegiance?
... of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice.
Well, thank you. The board met this morning in closed session. Item 1A, Conference for Labor Negotiators, direction was given. Also, conference with county council. Anticipate litigation outlet. Vice Chairman Crew report out on that one. Item 3A, or this item 3, confidential entry were approved.
It was update given.
Update given.
Okay, that'd be an item two.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we're moving on to public matters not on agenda. Is there any members of public that'd like to address the board on an issue that's not on agenda? Mr. May.
Question of the board decision on approving Reed Quarry application for extended hours. Wasn't that long ago, Ryan, that you and I and Sharon stood at my kitchen table, had some wine, talked about the woes of the world, grievances you had suffered at hands of others, et cetera, et cetera. Toward the end of the conversation, we started talking about what might be a compromise with the quarry wanting to operate till 10:00 PM and the residents wanting it to stay at 6:00 PM. You suggested 8:00 PM. So, what did we do? We go to the board hearing, and the first thing I say is, we propose that the quarry be allowed to operate until 8:00 PM. It's a compromise between the 10:00 PM and the 6:00 PM, and so compromise at 8:00 PM sounds fair. Well, we know that that didn't happen. So, why it didn't happen in large parts because of you, Richard. Andy Borth is a good friend. He had spoke at the meeting of the planning commission opposing the operations of the quarry as they had proposed. He said that it greatly impacted him, noise, lights, et cetera. Said that Tom Farrell had talked to him about a wall, but Tom had told him that it was too expensive. Andy was not at the board meeting when the decision was made. He called me afterwards to find out what happened. And so, I told him what had happened, and he said he was going to talk to you later, Richard. But during the board hearing, on multiple occasions, you asked Tom Farrell, was he going to build that wall for Andy? And when you finally had enough assurances that he was going to build that wall, you made the recommendation, made the motion to approve the operations to 9:00 PM for, I believe it was seven months, and 5:00 PM, or 8:00 PM for five months. Pat, you approved, or you seconded that motion, and that's what occurred. Richard, you sold all the rest of us out for the benefit of one friend. I think what would be appropriate would be for you to resign now and let somebody come in who would represent everybody in District 2. Thank you.
Thank you for mischaracterizing the situation and what was spoken at the meeting.
Well, why don't we look to the...
That's exactly right. Listening to the tape.
Yeah, well, Richard, you did what you did. You didn't respond to any of my inquiries. You avoided me at the crab feed. You've in fact did sell the rest of us out.
You could have come in the kitchen. I was in there for 90 minutes working.
I saw you walk.
Never did.
I saw you walking back and forth, Richard. Don't give you that.
Mischaracterized it. We'll leave it at that.
Yeah, we'll leave it at that.
Hey, that's enough.
You're petty.
There's... I think it was a hard decision for everybody. I think everybody did the best they could, so leave it at that.
Been a while since I've updated you on New California. As you know, we have, for 195 weeks, presented grievances against the governor of the state. Many people wonder, why are so many people leaving California? Hundreds of thousands have left. Why is this? It's a beautiful state, best weather in the world, best topography, mountains, lakes, oceans. Why is everybody leaving? Got to be a reason. The state is totally broken, is being run by a dictator who doesn't listen to the people, does not listen to the people at all. And so, New California, we made a proclamation in January 15, 2018, to create a new state. And we've had 185 weekly grievance, 195 weekly grievances since then, and now we are actually proclaiming that we are a state. So, I would like to read proclamation that was made on January 15. It was made at the Capitol in Sacramento, and I believe each of you supervisors received a copy of this. If not, let me know, and I will send you another copy. I'll just read briefly some of this. "New California is a new state in development exercising its constitutional right to form from the state of California. The process to form California is authorized and codified in Article 4, Section 3 and 4 of the United States Constitution, while utilizing the model of statehood established by West Virginia. Citizens of New California have decided to remedy the abuse of power by the government of California by exercising their right to form a new state. We are determined to live under a state government in the United States of America and under the Constitution of the United States." On January 15, 2018, New California declared that whenever any form of government becomes destructive, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government. With a long train of abuses and acts to seize and hold the people's power without legal authority and pursuing invariably the same object that clearly demonstrates a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty to throw off the government and provide new guards for their future security. The people of California are suffering from a tyrannical state government which fails to provide a republican form of governance. Now, let's talk here. What is the republican form of governance? A lot of people say we're a democracy. We're not a democracy. A republican form of governance has protection for the minority. A democracy is ruled by the majority. And so, if you look at our federal constitution and our federal setup, we have, the Congress has representation of other people according to how many people, but the Senate has two senators for every state. So, everybody in this country has somebody to represent them, and this is what we want back in California. So, the problem with California is they're not following the Constitution. The Constitution says that each state must provide three things for their people. The first is a republican form of government, which we don't have. Second is security at the borders. And our governor is just letting people flood through the borders with no... Texas trying to stop them. California isn't trying to stop them. Just flooding through by the hundreds of thousands. And the third thing is protection on, safety on our streets. You know, the governor has let loose out of our prisons, tens of thousands of prisoners. The sheriffs in our state are really upset about this because the governor never talks to them, and to get his advice about how this is going to affect the people, he just changes the laws and lets people out of the prisons. And so, for those three reasons, California is no longer a proper conforming state in the Union. Therefore, the only way to fix this is a new state. There is a movement to reform California. This will not work because the Constitution is so loosely written that there is no 900 amendments to it. This is not right. We need a Constitution that is formed after the federal Constitution, very difficult to change, so that we are not tied into all the laws, all these amendments in the Constitution that actually force the governor to make, to do things that make... He wants to fix stuff, he can't because the Constitution says we've got to use, we've got to invest in green energy, for one example. The people wanted that, so they passed it as the Constitution, so we can't change that. And so, as a result, our pension plans are having to invest their money into nonprofit making companies because green energy companies don't make money. And so, this has been a really problem, and the pension is in bad shape, especially the teachers' pensions. They've recently had to admit that they have made very, very bad investments in property and that they are very much in problems with the teachers' pension. I don't know how long I've gone. So, anyway, I just wanted to let you know that we are still alive and well. We are prepared to send 10 delegates to Congress to promote the idea of letting us have statehood. And we understand that when delegates go to Congress and they get seated, they cannot vote, but they can be on committees, they could even chair committees. They have a lot of influence with the Congress people to get them, see why this would be a wonderful idea to get, because California is so in debt, $68 billion in debt. Do you all know that?
About time to wrap it up, Lois.
Wrap it up, yeah, okay. And so, anyway, I just want to let you know we're doing these. If you would like me to send you, does any of you get a copy of this? I thought that Chris Strong has sent it. If not, you remember getting that. Okay, all right. Well, thank you for this time.
Any other members of public? Mr. White.
Good morning. Larry White, Pine Grove. I'm here on behalf of a dear friend and mentor of mine, Mr. Zoltan Navaki. Zoltan was the owner of the Pine Grove Professional Center that's adjacent to the Pine Grove Town Hall. It has professional offices, mini storage, and the walk and roll restaurant. Mr. Navaki, on January 27, left me a message on my phone asking me for some advice, and what I advised him at that time was to come here, had a board meeting, and the public matters not on the agenda, and share his thoughts. Unfortunately, Mr. Navaki passed away last Tuesday morning, so he is no longer here to voice his opinion. So, I just feel that, if you don't mind, I'm going to play his message that he left me to the board so that you guys can know from him how he felt about the Pine Grove Town Hall and the parking situation, so...
I think that'd be fair, Larry.
Okay. I don't know why I feel like I'm sitting outside...
Long's not over five minutes.
No, it's 2 minutes and 17 seconds.
Perfect.
And I don't know why I always feel like I'm sitting outside the principal's office when I'm before you guys, but I don't know where it is. So, I don't have any grandchildren here, so hopefully I do this properly, so...
Well, did you find anything behind the mailbox? Hello, Larry. It's Zoltan. Well, did you find anything behind the mailbox? That's question number one. Number two, do you know what's going on in the Pine Grove Town Hall there? They've taken up all my parking spaces. I heard Charlie, the restaurant gal, probably that they had no place to park for their customers. They got something going on in the town hall, and people just come and use my private parking lot, you know? That's against the law. That's trespassing. So, I don't know if you hear anything about what's going on. Is it some kind of a party or wedding, or they rent the place out to anybody who wants to rent it for money, you know? And, you know, town hall has no parking, just like having a big football stadium without any parking. But would people park? So, they just park whatever they can, so they use my parking lot, and they're taking it away from my own businesses, you know? That parking lot dedicated to the businesses and their customers. If somebody parks on your property and takes his business somewhere else, that's trespassing, you know? So, I don't know. If you have any ideas what to do, I called the Board of Supervisors already. This is not a new thing. This has gone on for years. About 15 years ago, I had a special meeting at the front of the Board of Supervisor, and they quieted down a little bit. Now, they started to park on my property. Every time they rent it out to people, they just come and park on my property. That's illegal as heck, you know? All right, Larry, I want, so I thought you might have some ideas what to do about this parking situation, so let me know if you come up with something, okay? Thanks. Bye.
So, you heard it from the man, and hopefully his widow doesn't have to deal with this because it is upsetting. So, I don't know what you guys can do, but thank you for your time.
Well, the Pine Grove Corridor Project was going to provide three parking spaces out in front of it. In fact, they moved power poles to do that, and then they were going to have parking across the street plus a, an OCH light, a red light, and... And I guess they were going to bold out the walkway so that people could walk across, and it would be safer. But that's all kind of up in the air. So, the idea that we weren't doing anything and not responding isn't 100% correct. I talked to Zoltan a number of times about this.
Oh, yeah. I think more inclined would be is that part of the rental agreement is to make them aware that that is private parking.
Yeah.
Larry, I talked to Zoltan myself, and John Hopkins talked to him and then sent him an email that he had got with the rental people, have them reiterate that the parking is on the street or across the street and not in his parking lot.
Yeah. So, anyways, I just felt that it was on my heart that I thought I should share.
Fair enough.
Because Zoltan was very important to me.
It is a problem. I don't think it's exclusive to this one. I mean, the businesses across from the Waffle Shop, they have the same exact problem.
Yeah. So, anyways, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Any other members of public? Hester.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to apologize to my talented associate here. I'm not here early enough here to share this morning because I thought that this was a different time that you were meeting. But it's based on in January, I think, that you're... Does the board meet on the first and third Tuesdays? And then, the Board of Equalization, I believe, is on the second and fourth. Is that correct?
We're generally second and fourth.
Generally, second and fourth.
On occasion, we have a meeting gets moved around. I think one time, I think Elections was in here.
Yeah, the election is at the end of this month. So, this will be where the election is held, so for 10 days, we can't use it, so...
So, normally, it is on the second and fourth?
Normally, it is.
Okay.
Probably 99% of the time. We tricked you, or...
Okay. Well, that's not hard to do.
Except for during elections and except for December. We usually shift it in December.
Okay. Well, really good, because in January, I think, did you meet? Did not meet on the second because the second was... Well, the second of January was the first Tuesday, but you did not meet on that...
On the ninth.
What's your issue?
Well, I just wanted to clarify what you did in January and why I was confused about it.
That was the second and fourth Tuesday.
Okay. Normally, regularly. Very good. But also, you meet as a Board of Equalization.
When needed.
Only when needed.
Correct.
Well, that's it. The other thing is that I really support a new California. And the 51st state, it would be really good, I think, to see that because it's already almost two different states in terms of the way that the urban areas of California take up representation that the rural areas and rural counties do not receive. There's always been a significant difference between the rural and urban counties. And I think that the idea of a 51st state that Lois has shared is a really good one. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of public? CNN, one thing I will say, I don't know if you need a different state, but at minimum, you need to go back to how it was when we basically had... every area had representation in the Senate because it's pretty obvious now that LA runs a whole state, and their issues are not the same as many rural issues. But will that ever happen? Who knows? But it's a big problem. It'd be kind of like, okay, we have cattle up here and we keep cattle on some of the open range land, eat the grass, and help with the fire danger. We operate like some of the urban areas do. We'd be telling everybody in the Bay Area they have to have a cow to eat the grass in their backyard for fire danger. Well, they live in high rises. They think we're nuts, but they don't seem to... when they foist some of their rules on us, they don't seem to consider the needs of rural California. Anyway...
I will tell you, though, that I was just out in Southern California, and there were representatives from corporations in Alabama and Texas and all over the South. And most people don't realize how rural California is and suburban that California is. But they recognize too that cows and sheep don't vote.
Well, that is true, but why did the founders of our nation have every state had representation to represent? Because whether it's a small state without many votes or a large state with a lot of votes, they all had representation. And I think that's kind of the problem we're having in rural California.
Well, I think also, back then, when they founded the Constitution is because every state was a sovereign entity.
Understand that.
Because they were individual colonies, so they were different. It's different than the various counties.
But it was the same problem. Anyway, a full sidebar conversation, so thank you for...
I saw it on Schoolhouse Rock.
With that, we're going to look for an approval agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Forster, second one by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carriage unanimous. Moving on, the approval of items on the consent agenda. I think you want to pull item 6A.
6A, yes, sir. We'll bring it back at a later date.
It'll be a later date or...
It'll be a later date. Yep.
So, it's not time-sensitive?
They said it's okay.
Oh, okay.
Looks for a motion with that item pulled. Actually, is there any person like to address the consent agenda before we vote? Looks for a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Cruz, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carriage unanimous. Moving on down. Regular agenda. Item 4A, this is Presentation of a Proclamation Recognizing February 2024 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Amador County. And we have here's a resolution that is basically recognizing the grand jury, and I'm thanking them for their work. Is there any members of the grand jury present that might like to speak on this issue?
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Steymates. I'm with the Grand Jury Motherlode Chapter. I want to thank you for this proclamation on behalf of the California Grand Jury Association, the Amador Grand Jury, and our Motherlode Grand Jury Chapter. Brenda, would you like to say anything?
This is the month when grand juries are being recruited, and that's the reason for having this proclamation at this time. Grand jury serves a wonderful purpose in every county in the state of California. It's entirely voluntary, unlike regular court juries. And it's a wonderful experience, particularly if you want to get to know your county and all of the issues that are going on.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, at this time, I'd like to read the resolution. Amador County Board of Supervisors, Resolution 24-015, Resolution Recognizing February 2024 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Amador County, Whereas Every Year in Each of California's 58 Counties, 19 Ordinary Citizens Take an Oath to Voluntarily Serve a Term of One Year as Grand Jurors, And Whereas the Grand Jury System Was Brought to the United States with a Colonist, And the First Grand Jury in America Was Empanelled in 1635, And Whereas the Amador County Grand Jury Was Organized in 1854, And Whereas the Grand Jury is Truly an Independent Investigative Body, Operationally Separate from the Entities and Officials They Investigate And Who Are Officers of the Court Under Guidance of the Amador County Superior Court Presiding Judge, Whereas Certain Responsibilities of the Grand Jury Are Mandated by State Law And the Grand Jury Has Jurisdictional Rights To Investigate City and County Departments, School Districts, and Special Districts, Whereas the Grand Jury Is Composed of 19 Citizens Who Will Represent the Citizens of the County In Making Recommendations for Improvement to Our Local Government, And Whereas the Grand Jury Decides What Areas of Local Government They're Going to Investigate or Review During the Year. One of the Most Important Functions of the Grand Jury Is to Review the Operations of the Officers, Departments, and Agencies of Local Government in Special Districts, And Whereas the Grand Jury Sees and Reviews Complaints from Citizens Within the County, And Whereas the Grand Jury's Investigative Process May or May Not Result in Reports. Those Fact-Finding Reports Identify Specific Problems And Provide Specific Recommendations for Governmental Improvement And/or Identify Commendations, And Whereas the Grand Jury Is Recognized for Their Dedicated Service And Their Dedicated Time Volunteering to Make Amador County Governmental and Special District Entities More Efficient For the Best Interest of the Community. Therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Amador, State of California, that hereby designates the month of February 2024 To Be Cleared Civil Grand Jury Month in Amador County And to Encourage Citizens' Participation in the Grand Jury Process. The foregoing Resolution was duly passed at the Board of Supervisors, the County of Amador, at a regular meeting thereof held on the 6th day of February 2024, with the following vote. Unanimous with that, would you, lady grand jurors, like to maybe have a picture taken with this? I'll come right down.
Should we vote, Chair?
Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
We have motion by Brown, second through. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carriage unanimous. Thank you. Any public comment on that item? CNN, move down to item 4B. This is APAL Humane Society. Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Request by APAL For Funding and Assistance in Amount of $15,000 To Provide $40 Low-Cost Cat Spay-Neuter Surgery For Approximately 200 Cats For Amador County Residents. The Current Budgeted Amount is for $15,000. Ms. Manning?
We have a huge number of cats coming to us, much more than what we've had in the past. And we think that there's COVID to blame, as well as a nationwide shortage of veterinarians. So, people are having a tough time getting in. We do have veterinarians who are willing to work with us to hold clinics where we can have the people come to us and for $40 have their cats spayed or neutered. We took in 713 cats and kittens last year. And although we hate to have the big numbers, we're glad to have all of those spayed and neutered before they leave our care.
Okay. Or members, any?
I have a question. There is. We all know there's a lack of veterinarians nationwide, for whatever reason. I think a lot of it is. A lot of them just are doing too many spays and neuters, and then maybe it's not as exciting. So, with that in mind, though, have there been any efforts to start like a physician's assistant, a veterinarian's assistant program, where they might be able, under the watchful direction of a veterinarian, to do these spays and neuters on their own?
You know, we've had several places try to start a low-cost spay-neuter clinic that just does spays and neuters, but the cost is sky-high. We actually considered converting one of our offices at our facility, but we'd have to carry controlled substances and do a lot of different things. Their costs are really high, too. So, you know, you can't say, well, gee, $330 for a male cat neuter is huge. But it is. And the reality is the salaries are higher, their supplies are costing more. It's just very expensive. And unfortunately, what we're seeing is that the people who get the free kittens that don't come to us and that aren't adopted from the shelter or from APAL are the ones with the... going to the people with the lower income, and they simply can't afford to get these cats spayed or neutered. It is very expensive and very difficult. We've watched Jackson Creek vets struggle just to get a second veterinarian in their clinic. It's hard to get them out here.
That's why I'm bringing up like a physician's assistant, who might have to only go through a year or two of education to do specific surgeries like spay and neuter. I don't even know if they would consider that. I mean, it seems like it's gone the other way. Now, you can't even buy medications that you used to be able to buy on the shelf without going through a veterinarian.
Exactly. Yes. It's going the opposite direction. And I think many of the veterinarians don't, until they get out of school, they don't do the spay-neuters. They do everything but the spay-neuter surgeries. Fortunately, we have Dr. Bob Yak, who still comes to just do spays and neuters. That's all he's doing now. Otherwise, I know the shelter would be in trouble, and so would we because they do 20, 30 spay-neuters in one day for us. Yeah.
Thank you. Any members of public like to comment on this issue? CNN, it looks like we have a request for the budget amount of $15,000. It's already in the current budget. Just looking to release those funds to APAL.
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to say the motion was Brown, second through. Axe, okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
How many of the cats going through the procedure are from the feral cat program? Are they involved in this at all?
I think none of the ones that we're asking for spay-neuter are feral. But yes, from our 713, I think 286 were from the feral cat program.
I think that's valuable. I like having the feral cats around my place, as long as there's not too many of them.
Exactly.
They take care of a lot of the little rodents that are troublesome.
Yep. I always said that the hardest workers at the feed barn were the barn cats.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carriage unanimous.
Item 4C, Discussion of Possible Action Relative to County's Response to Proposal by AT&amp;T to End Landline Service. Riley?
Chairman, this is an issue that's popped up. AT&amp;T has sent out letters to a large part of the county indicating that they're going to ask to stop being the carrier of last resort. This is not just our county. Let me share this here, and I will grab the number of maps.
You know, actually, while you're doing that, I'll say I've had quite a bit of outreach on this from constituents in my district and out of my district. People are very concerned about it. A lot of people use this for the landline for medical devices. And a lot of people, they don't get very good cell service, and they're worried about if AT&amp;T is allowed to pull out. You know, will they be able to get service, and how good is service? A lot of times, some things you'll find where they... an entity may say that area is serviced by another provider. Yeah, it's serviced all right. You just can't get any service. Doesn't work very well. So, I think this is a pretty important issue for rural California. And even, maybe in some places, even maybe in the urban areas a little bit.
So, you can see the extent of the request. It is not just us. It is up and down the state where they're making that request. So, if people are concerned that they're included in this area, if they go to the CPUC website, there's a tab for this item, for the AT&amp;T item. You can get to this map, type in your address, and it will tell you whether or not you are included in the area.
Do we know what their plans are for cell service in this area? Because that's... this is all kind of the western end of the county where they should have pretty good direct line of sight for cell service. And would people be able to use that?
Well, I'm, I'm sure that's what AT&amp;T's argument is going to be is that they're using cell phones instead of landlines. But uh, there are a number of people, particularly in our county, that are, are blocked for various reasons and, and different areas because of geography or topography uh that doesn't let them use uh cell service.
Okay, well, the other thing is, is that this is kind of an area that I believe is serviced by AT&amp;T as a provider for internet. You know, the state has this big push to bring internet to the rural areas and this is the same area. And, um, you know, uh, can we rely on them to actually provide internet service, you know, the last mile in this area? I mean, if they're gonna uh relinquish this territory for landlines, you know, what, if, you know, how are they gonna accommodate the internet services there? Also, if people have internet service, they can use their cell phone with the internet.
With, uh, yeah, uh, calling verse over wifi rather.
Yes, I mean, I do that at my house and I now get cell service at my house, but I still have my landline just in case. But, um, it doesn't give me a lot of confidence if they're gonna relinquish this, that they're gonna do a good job on the internet aspect of things. And then also, and the third question is, if they do relinquish this, can another provider move in like Volcano? I don't know if they are interested in this. Is this considered obsolete technology, landlines? And is that just the way of the future? I don't know.
I don't know either. There, there are four public hearings uh that they've got scheduled up and down the state. None of them are anywhere close to us. Uh, but one of them is via Zoom, the last one is in March, is via Zoom. So, uh, that would be the opportunity for folks to, to attend one of those public hearings most readily.
It's March, March nineteenth.
March nineteenth, yeah.
Yeah, we used to have a landline at our house and it was so unreliable. AT&amp;T kept saying it was on our side the problem, uh, they would never really investigate it thoroughly. I, I think their, this whole move is to save them money like any corporation. And I think we've just broken the back of a lot of people with, um, the decision by the CPUC to give PG&E a major increase, basically doubling the, the cost for many people. Um, I have a couple issues, uh, personally, my mother-in-law relies on this for her medical data to be transmitted via telephone lines like many people. And I have, um, another person who's right over the line from my district, Deanne Dane, uh, sent an email to me. AT&amp;T wants to do away with landlines in rural areas. We paid them to put in our landline back in eighty nine. Our AT&amp;T cell service is unreliable. We rely on our landline for health and disaster emergencies. It is incomprehensible that this would even be considered, but we must let our voice be heard. I, I think we should strongly oppose this, um, send a, and send a letter to the CPUC.
Yeah, no, it's
Yep.
Major Brown?
Yeah, we, um, the supervisors did receive a letter on email, I should say, on February first, that RCRC is opposing an AT&amp;T application at the California Utilities Commission to remove the carrier of last resort. So that part of it has already started, but they are asking for, um, supervisors to, um, give them their feedback.
And you get us a copy of that, uh, opposed letter?
Okay.
So if AT&amp;T has landlines already in place, what happens to that legacy tech, uh, infrastructure? Do they relinquish it to someone else? Do they just let it languish or what?
My guess is they would just stop maintaining it. Uh, but I also believe someone else could, uh, could assume service in that position. Um, just, just cause AT&amp;T stops being the carrier of last resort doesn't mean they're gonna stop providing service, although they could. So, uh,
It's, it's a step in that direction.
It is, it is a step in that direction.
I'm sure what they may say or whatever, they're setting up the get out of land, landlines if they can.
And it's gonna cost money, more money for people to have another provider more than likely. I mean, nothing comes cheap, but you talked about AT&amp;T providing, um, maintenance. Um, I respect the maintenance guys and they're out there all the time in, in our area and set our own road. In fact, I don't know why they just don't purchase the house for one of them because his truck is there all the time. So, uh, it's just deferred maintenance, much like PG&E, a lot of deferred maintenance.
I know it's, it's also, I would urge people to go on that Zoom call, um, CPUC, I mean, pretty much everybody got a letter, I, I would think. And I think we could probably post this letter on our website too. I don't see why you couldn't. People throw it away and then realize, my gosh, I'd like to comment on that. So I think we could probably put this, what, on our, basically on
Yeah, we can put it, put it there.
Center on, on our web, webpage.
You can also submit comment through that, uh, CPUC website as well.
Yeah.
And, uh, but I, we'll, we'll put it on the front page of our website.
And I think it, it's helpful if people comment because, you know, it's surprising a lot of times, even the issue before the board, um, some of these major decisions, you don't get many comments. So I mean, I'd imagine CPUC would get a lot on this, but I'd, I'd urge people to comment on it. Um, so we're looking for action probably to send a letter to CPUC and, um, to maybe any other entity that the board or entity or body the board sees fit. Like RCRC, it probably wouldn't hurt to send them a letter from us also.
I would say our, our legislative delegation, did you say that?
Yeah, and legislative body, you know.
All of them, because if the CPUC rejects it, it's my understanding that, uh, legislature could override that and still grant it.
I was just trying to make it very broad, so wherever we decide to send a letter, the boards authorize it. So whatever entity, legislative entity that board sees fit. And I think, yeah, should go definitely to our legislators and probably wouldn't hurt to even send one to the governor, just, just, just because. Looking for a motion? Well, well, one second. Any members of public like to comment on this? Only two out there, but okay. Board?
I'll for the question.
Hold on just a second, let me stop sharing this. No, we don't have any, no Zoom comment. I was overriding the Zoom.
Um, do you have a motion?
I would move that, um, our board put a letter of opposition together to AT&amp;T's desire to, to stop all landline service in the designated areas.
Motion by Forrester, second by Crew, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? Carries unanimous. Item four D is review and approval of January twenty third, twenty twenty four, board supervisors meeting minutes. Any changes, corrections? Motion?
Would approve.
Second. Motion by Forrester, second by Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. Uh, let's see here. Well,
Ten thirty.
We have a public hearing at ten thirty, so we're gonna take a recess until ten thirty. And after the public hearing at eleven o'clock, we'll have our, um, Florida Equilization Hearing. And we'll come back at ten thirty.
Okay, call off meeting back to order. We're going to republic hearing scheduled for 10:30. This is planning department consideration of planning commission recommendation to approve a request for a variance. Ms. Shepherd?
Good morning, Board. Nicole Shepherd with the planning department.
Good morning.
The applicant has requested a variance from the Amter County Code Section 19.24.040, R1 district regulations generally, which requires a 25-foot setback to allow the construction of an entry addition 13.17 feet from the front property line and a pedestrian access bridge up to and beyond the front property line, subject to obtaining all necessary encroachment permits. This project was previously reviewed by the Tri-County Technical Advisory Committee on December 8, 2023. TRITAC forwarded the project to the Amter County Planning Commission with no technical objections to the project as proposed. The Amter County Planning Commission then reviewed the project during its regular meeting on January 9, 2024, and recommended approval to the board of supervisors along with the SECO exemption under section 15305, Class 5 of the state SECO guidelines. The applicant has also requested a delay in the expiration of the variance to two years from the decision date to accommodate any potential delays due to inclement weather and contractor availability.
There was initially an objection from Mr. Reed Bennett on this that has been resolved because the project has been made smaller than what was originally intended.
Yes, so it's my understanding that the project was initially brought to the Kirkwood Meadows Association as a larger project with a garage and a driveway. That was not submitted to the planning department, the project in front of you with a pedestrian access bridge and the entry addition is all that is part of the project. So it has been downsized, is my understanding from the original size.
So Mr. Bennett seemed to be satisfied because the storage area for snow was preserved or actually they're going to open up an area. I don't know if they could, a 40-foot slope or something like that, they probably couldn't put much snow on there, could they? It's going to end up coming down like he said. The flow goes towards his two properties anyway.
It is my understanding, and I may refer to the representative to better explain what the available snow storage, but the project will not impact the current snow storage available on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Guess this time we'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public like to comment on the project?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Forster, second by Axe to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carrie's unanimous. Any other questions? I don't have any questions. Just long as what that Reed Bennett's concern was addressed, it sounds like one question I had. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion then to approve the request for the variance and adopt the resolution and adopt the recommended findings.
We have a motion by Axe and a second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was too quick. We have Board of Eagle's Nation hearing scheduled for 11 o'clock, so we'll take a recess and come back at 11 o'clock.